We call meeting door. Everybody change get sit down here. And we'll start out with the, all right, Mr. Barton, would you care to lead us some?
I'd like to, let's bow our heads. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we just pray that you be with us tonight, Lord, as we discuss the matters of the county, Lord, give our board members wisdom, Lord, and discernment, and Lord, just be with our citizens, Lord, with the weather, the cold temperatures, Lord, Lord, just pray that you keep everyone safe, Lord, we'd like to ask a special prayer for family Del Mullins with the passing of his father from Sandy Ridge Fire today, Lord, we just pray that you bring your blessing down upon them and comfort them, Lord, in this time of loss, Lord, watch over us, I we pray, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I'm gonna do pledge, Mr. Hall, will you lose some pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the great power for which it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, we've got the approval of the minutes, y'all wanna do those separately or all together?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that if everybody's read them, that we do them all at one sitting, I make a motion that we approve the special call meeting, the regular meeting, and the organizational meeting at one night.
I'll second.
Are y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. We'll have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the request that we remove item number eight B three, which is under appointments for the Cumberland Industrial Facilities Authority, if we can remove that, that term does not expire until July, so.
And I would like to add to the agenda Sandy Ridge Rescue at the end.
So do that under nine B other business?
Yes, please. Everybody's okay with that?
Rescue, did you say?
Yes, Sandy Ridge Rescue.
Okay.
You put it under nine D?
Nine B, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Or did nine B under other business?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the addition and the deletion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. What about the approval of expenditures, wanna do those separately?
I would like to make a motion that we pull out the expenditures and do those separate. And I make that motion to take out the A and do it by itself.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
And you have to roll call, I think, on that one.
Have to roll call?
Yeah, because one will have to abstain.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote since maybe a conflict. Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, don't we, don't we need to move in second? You just made the move in second to remove it, but did you make the mo- motion to accept the approval of expenditures?
No.
It's just to remove it at this point.
We're just removing it at this point.
Oh, okay, so the votes for that?
To, to, to separate it out, then there'll be another motion in a second.
Well, 'cause I thought we all had voted aye.
Correct.
To move it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Guy, how do you vote?
Well, if we're voting to approve them, expenditures?
It's, it's just to remove the expenditures from the.
And then do it by itself, yes.
But you called for everybody to vote, nobody voted aye on that already, without roll call vote.
They said I had to do a roll call.
Oh, okay, excuse me. I vote to pull it out, I, I vote yes to pull it out and vote separately. And you voted yes, right?
And I voted aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye as well.
Okay.
Now I make a motion that we approve the expenditures as presented.
Second. I'll second.
We need a roll call vote on that too? Mr. Hall?
Aye.
Guy?
I abstain because I had a check in the month of December for catering the county, part of the county dinner in December, so I abstain.
Okay, Ms. Willis?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Aye as well.
And now I make a motion that we approve all the rest of them together unless the sheriff wants to be pulled out separate and do his report.
Sheriff Fleming, would you like to be pulled out separate, do your report?
Or you can do it and then we'll vote on all of them.
Yeah, you want it, you can vote it.
But if you give it and then?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and make it, then we'll vote on all of them, is that right?
We'll make a two call, okay.
You're fine.
I apologize for the late notice on the 2024 call stats, I got it to Larry probably about four o'clock, asking if he could give you guys a, a copy of them, I hope you got a, got a copy of it, I know it's a lot to look at, but we'll start with December really quick, and if you start at the top, again, I'm just gonna hit the ones that are most active for us, the protective orders, looks like the month of December, twenty-one protective orders, looks like we had one juvenile transport to Bristol, one criminal transport to Marion, one extradition to Kentucky, like we had forty-five arrests for the month of December, forty-eight point five temporary detention order hours. The deputies ran a total of twenty-three thousand three hundred miles for the month of December, had thirty-nine auxiliary hours, hours worked. Oh, it's like we served four hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty-nine civil process papers for the month of December. Seventy-one nine-one-one hang-up calls. Thirty-six assist motors with keys. Twenty-four animal control calls.
What do you, you do with those, you just transfer them to the animal control program?
Typically, if, if we can handle them by phone, we will, but if it's something that we need to refer to Shannon and Bo, we, we always do. It took me a thirty-two motor vehicle accidents, of course, you know, we've had a lot of snow, so we've had a lot of vehicles in a ditch, and that's included in that number as well. Had five hundred ninety-nine patrol and checks of areas throughout the county, ninety request officers either in, in person or by phone. Forty-five traffic stops. Like we received seventy-nine warrants. If you look at the mileage, you can see why it's very important that we keep up with our vehicle fleet, I, I've got three already over a hundred and fifty thousand miles, and if you look on down the page, you'll see that we also, we have a lot of new vehicles, and like I said last month as well, I, I appreciate that, and I feel like we need to try to continue to get, get three vehicles per year, just to keep up, if you skip a year, we get behind, but again, I appreciate you guys for, for all your help on the vehicles. The TDOs, looks like we had a trip to, one trip to Marion, and it looks like we went to Poplar Springs and Petersburg, then we had one that went to Dickinson Community Hospital upstairs. And that's it for the month of December, really quick, I wanna talk about the 2024 call stats. It's on this page right here, you guys may have it in that packet that Larry printed off, I know it was sixty-some pages, and I apologize for that, but. The 2024 call stats, we answered just over twenty-seven thousand calls for 2024, and again, I'm just gonna highlight a few of these, the nine-one-one calls we received was five thousand three hundred and thirty-two calls for the year, and if you look down through here, you'll see in the left column, the assist motors, five hundred thirty-nine, one hundred twenty-seven behavioral health calls, two hundred twenty-two BOLOs be on the lookout, twenty-five burglaries, and we had five thousand four hundred twenty-four church checks, served seven thousand one hundred ninety-four civil process papers. Two hundred and seven domestic calls. Two hundred and nine escorts. One thousand two hundred and five fire calls. Four hundred eighty-seven government patrols. Six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven patrolling checks. One hundred forty-three public assistance. One thousand five hundred eighty-seven request officers. Two hundred ninety-five roadway hazards, and a lot of those roadway hazards, we give to state police, we don't, we don't answer, respond to all of them. Hundred seventy-three security alarms. Hundred twelve theft calls. Five hundred sixty-three traffic stops. Looks like we served one thousand three hundred and thirty-four warrants and three hundred and fifteen welfare checks. That pretty much sums it up for 2024. Anybody have any questions, anything about any interest?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Well, what's the difference between making the, the church checks and checks that you're using, you, you've got them separately?
Yeah, so, right now, we have been awarded a grant, it's a church grant, and it, so it pays our officers in addition, it's kinda like overtime for our guys, they come out, patrol, and just, just do church checks, they don't answer any calls while they're out, they don't do anything else but church checks. We've been awarded that grant the last two years, we got notification a couple weeks ago that, that we will not be awarded that grant again for next year, for whatever reason, but it's been good for two years, we're gonna continue to church, check the churches a- as we always do, so that's the difference in the church checks, when they come out and do the church checks, that's all they check, so the patrolling checks are people's homes when they're on vacation, they might call us and say, I'll be out of town this week, will you check my house, will you check Osmond Gap, will you check Sandy Ridge, Candy Ridge, patrol a certain area of the county, so that's, that's the, every officer throughout the county, every night, when they, when they travel across the lake road, they'll call in a P and C, a patrolling check of the lake road, that's how we can keep up of who's been where, what time, and it's documented through dispatch.
So technically, they could save some mileage if the, while they're going to Lake, Candy Ridge, I don't know how many churches there are on Candy Ridge, there's quite a few, if you did a patrol check on Candy Ridge, you could count stop at those churches, couldn't you?
If you stop and check them, we only count the church checks if we stop, check the doors, check the front door, back door, and we're actually getting out and physically checking them, the patrolling checks, if we say we've done a P and C of Candy Ridge, that just means we patrol to the county line and back to the four-way. But the church checks, we're actually getting out, checking the doors, checking the windows, walking around the church, making sure everything's okay, and we leave a check slip.
Yeah, I've seen them at the church.
Of the church.
So of these, you've got these individual mileage for the people, these people on this list here?
Yes, that's, that's of their vehicles that, that they drive.
So what deputy has the most looking at this, of course, your mileage is higher than any one's?
So right now, we got Rowley Bowman at one hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred twenty-five miles.
That's on, that's what's on his vehicle?
Yes. So we, we've got a couple coming in, we've got a couple trucks ordered that we, we've had ordered for a year, fourteen months or so, and expected to be here within the next couple months, and Rowley will be getting one of those new ones.
I, I expect that Rowley works on the weekends, not just, he's not just an RSO.
No, he, he's a school resource officer.
Well, does he get mileage from, which he should?
Yeah, well, he drives from Candy Ridge to, to the school, but occasionally, he will, the SROs will come out and they'll work the church grant, or they will work DUI patrol, so they have other mileage other than just from their house to the school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Do any of the other counties that you know of give a report like this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Kinda wondering where we kinda stand as far as all these statistics and that and analysis with our surrounding locality.
Yeah, and, and that's gonna vary by population, I can imagine, you know, the more populated area you have, the more civil process you're gonna have, more DUIs you're gonna have, more vehicles, you know, stopped you're gonna have, so it, I guess it's gonna depend on the population of the area more than anything. Anything else? They ask any question?
Can I make a comment? Those are, some of those are high numbers for, for a thirteen thousand, area of thirteen thousand residents or citizens in this county.
Yeah.
And that, you know?
I, I think so too, and.
And then I noticed on there, the DOAs was thirty-five for the year, which is basically averaging somewhere around three a month, whether that's just passing away, you know, from natural causes or whatever, but if it, if very many of those are anything doing with drug overdoses or anything that are DOAs, sad.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And, you know, we, we do all of them, we respond to all the DOAs, you know, we're there from the beginning of the call to the end of the call, you know, we make all the arrangements for the funeral home, contact medical examiner's office, we do it all, usually it's about a, about a three-hour process on, on one, that a deputy's tied up, when you get, you know, six or eight a month, it's, it's tough sometimes.
Yeah. So you're total, excuse me, can I ask, Mr. Chairman, I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
So how many cars totally do you have that are on this report being used?
So all the vehicles on here, just by looking at it, it appears all of them are in use.
How many you have there?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
So you've got twenty-three thousand mileage, right?
Yes.
So they're usually averaging, if you went together, you will be a thousand miles a month?
Roughly, again, the school resource officers, some of those that just travel from their house to the school, you know, for example, Deputy Bowman, he travels, what, three miles maybe to the school, so six, six miles roughly round trip, so most of that mileage that you see is gonna come from the deputies that work the road, it, it's not uncommon, it's not uncommon to run three hundred, three hundred fifty miles in the county in one night, I personally, I've ran about four hundred and eighty miles in one night in Dickinson County, almost five hundred miles.
Well, I know when I worked for the county and state, if I got over a thousand miles a month, and I covered the whole county, I didn't have any help, of course, I don't know what y'all do, but nevertheless, it was an eight-hour shift.
Yeah.
And most of the time, it would be less than a thousand miles a month.
Yeah.
Of course, I guess the reimbursement now on mileage is what, fifty-five, fifty-six by miles, I don't, cents a mile, I don't even know what it is now. But I don't see that that's being excessive with twenty-six vehicles, of course, like you said, some of them aren't, like, the SROs are not going a mile.
Right. And that includes trips as well, so, you know, Marion trips or Petersburg trips, that's everything together, so. We do, I did lose two deputies, three deputies, I'm sorry, I lost one to, two to retirement, Terry Bill Wallace retired, Donald Byers retired January one, and then I lost Daniel Carrico to Norton PD, unfortunate, but it happens sometimes, so a little bit shorthanded right now, but we'll, we'll make it, I just wanted to report that to you guys.
Were you hiring back at Beckner Place?
We have, I, I've hired Ryan Turner from the jail, he's off of Backbone Ridge, and hired Adam Perrigen, somebody you know, Adam, Grandfather Cecil Perrigen, Adam worked Chevrolet Garage, they're both in the academy, they started their second week yesterday, both of them doing well, so we hope they make it through, it's about a nineteen, twenty-week process, but I have hired those two, but I'll be end of April, first of May, before we get them out of the academy. Anything else?
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sorry to take so much time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I all at one time, thank you. And we send you, that they won't want pulled out for anything.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, now we're open floor for public comment, it's been nice to come over, you've, what are you gonna?
I will. Yes, thank you. Upon recognition by the chairman, the speaker shall address himself to the chairman, if at the conclusion of his remarks, any member of the Board of Supervisors desires further information, the member will address the speaker with permission of the chairman. Time limits, there shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes, a representative recruit may have up to five minutes to make a presentation, speakers are not permitted to donate time to other speakers, no speakers' time shall be extended except by unanimous consent or two-thirds vote of the board members present. Prohibited conduct. Prohibited conduct. Persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity, use language which insults or demeans any person when directed at a public official or employee when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures, make frivolous statements, interrupt other speakers, engage in behavior that intimidates others, address the boards on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to close public comments. If there's nobody calling in, I'll come up to the podium.
I make a motion that we close public comment.
I'll second it.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, next we have Jeff Hess with the Heart of Appalachia. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. And thank you, Mr. Barton. I actually recognize a few faces I've met, more than I thought I would here. I know most of you. But just a brief introduction of myself and a reintroduction of my organization, and just a little bio on myself, thanks. With any organization, sometimes there is a, and any business, there's turnover, retaining good people is a problem for all of us. So sometimes I think an introduction and reintroduction of the organization is good. My name is Jeff Hess. I'm a lifelong resident of the region. I reside across the mountain in Homemaker, Virginia, and graduated there, got my education here, married, I got two young daughters. That I'll allude to that in a minute, about how I'm hopeful of what my organization can do for our children and our region. Again, proud native of our region, and my organization is the Heart of Appalachia Tourism Authority. It was formed in 1993. Some of you may or may not know this. It was formed out of Linowesco and Cumberland Plateau Planning District Commission by the Cumberland, by the Virginia General Assembly in 1993 for the eight localities of Lee, Scott, Wise, Russell, Dickinson, Buchanan, Tazewell, and the city of Norton. So back in 1993, we had some visionaries that, that seen that we needed some diversification in our economy. It was for our coalfield counties, and I thought, you know, that was really progressive thinking in 1993. And your fine county has been the fruits of much labor, that you're blessed with so many natural assets in place. And we all have seen through Hurricane Helene what, you know, what this does to our economy when trails are closed and people don't have access to our natural assets or able to get out and enjoy what you all have here. I'll allude to that a little more later on. Of course, tourism is what Heart of Appalachia is all about. You know, it does no good to have our businesses here if they just survive. We want them to thrive. Because if your sleep-in in Clintwood doesn't look good on their books, you know, you have another hotel you're come here, they're going to look at those numbers. They're going to see how the sleep-in performs before they relocate and build here. So we don't want our businesses, any of them, the well-on-main, the coffee shops, we want them all to thrive, not just survive. And I think your county has so much good groundwork, and I'm very blessed to have a couple of fine natives of Dickinson County here that serve on my board, Ms. Rita Serat, your Chamber President and Tourism Director, and Mr. Austin Bradley, Superintendent of the Breaks Interstate Park. They, I'm proud to have them serve on my board. And of course, representing eight localities, I can't have favorites. But your county, doing the business that I do, is very easy, easy to market. That is the purpose of Heart of Appalachia. As you know, the more money we collectively get for southwest Virginia, the better we are. And without Heart of Appalachia, you know, all of our eight localities that I mentioned wouldn't get good representation. As you know, the money would go to other regions. The money would go to other counties. But since 1993, Heart of Appalachia has got a portion from the General Assembly. And now we, I may have the title of Executive Director, but of course, I'm not only Executive Director, I'm Business Development Manager, I'm Sales Manager, I'm Visitor Center Manager, and I'm an advocate for our organization to go out, as some of you will here in Richmond next week, to go out and meet our legislators for our fine region. And, you know, what you hear in my voice is real. I have a passion for our region. I will never, ever undersell our region. We have a superior region. That we know, you know what we have. You have the Breaks Interstate Park, the Crooked Road, Birch Knob Tower, Jetty Baker, Ralph Stanley, a Smithsonian Quality Museum. Those assets are easy for me to market. I have a part-time contracted social media coordinator, and then it's myself and our office manager. So we're a staff of basically two people that try to do the best we can on representing our region. But your fine county is a very easy one to market, and you have so many good products. And to have Rita to work with and collaborate with, and especially have her as my new chair lady, that's a great benefit for a young director to have her as a seasoned veteran on board. And our mission, of course, is clear. It's to provide the world-class marketing that showcases your incredible assets that I've mentioned. The results themselves, according to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, I was proud to work for two decades with the Virginia Tourism Corporation. I had a small business for 15 years prior to that. I understand the dynamics and the hardship that everyone has in small business. And as you know, small business is big business. We need that in our economy, that every business of every size thrives and not just survives. So tourism does play an important role, as you all know, in your economy, contributing to employment, income, and tax revenues according to VTC's interactive dashboard. Of course, we always allude to 2019. Dickinson County generated approximately 8.5 million in domestic travel expenditures, which supported 84 jobs and resulted in 1.2 million in payroll income. Additionally, these expenditures contributed to 0.5 million in combined state and local taxes. Overall, tourism significantly impacts Dickinson County's economy by generating revenue, creating jobs, and supporting local businesses. Tourism expenditures in Dickinson County, Virginia, have shown a positive trend in recent years. And according to VTC data, the county experienced a 12.5% increase in tourism spending from 20 to 2021, reaching approximately 9.6 million in '21. And this growth indicates a recovery from the pandemic's impact in, on the tourism sector. So I look forward, and I'm proud to represent Dickinson County and our seven other localities. And like I mentioned, I'm very blessed to have Rita and Austin serve on my board. And as I step into the role, I just, again, I wanted to introduce myself. I wanted to reintroduce Heart of Appalachia. Those fine books you have, they absorb my budget. To mail them out costs an enormous amount of money, and it's a, it's a very pretty book. It's well-published. I inherit a lot of good work. I do, from the organization, that the prior directors and people that have done a lot of good work. So I can't take credit for that, but you have the Trans Am Bicycle Route. We have 14 motorcycle routes that come through our eight localities. So we have a lot in place. And as you know, it's not the economy, but it's part of the economy. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Barton, for your support. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I've got one. I think you're doing a good job. We need help with tourism, for sure. With your advertisement and stuff and things, I see it on Facebook, and you're doing interviews and all that. There a way to monitor the impact of all that on the economy? What's, what's working, what ain't working?
Well, of course, you're going to have the analytics and the numbers that marketing people throw at you, but I haven't got a direct way to see that, other than the mailings that go out and the followers on my social. And then, you know, it does no good to have a warehouse of those books. If I have inquiries, you know, that's the name, is to spend all the money that I get to represent Dickinson County and those seven localities. So I have not got a specific way. I do get the hotel data reports. That's an indicator. I love it, as you know. Get those from VTC. And so we can track hotel data. And that trickles down from our friends at VTC. So Chris, that's the best answer I can give you.
So is there kind of a trend, you said, kind of increasing, tourism's kind of increasing in the area?
Well, we think so, according to just the numbers following what VTC gives us. And of course, we don't want to say the word pandemic, but everything is based on that. And now we say Helene, and we were blessed in this region not to have a huge impact, to have fabulous music and the festivals.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Chris.
You have a question?
I just have, I don't see Jetty Baker sitting around here.
We are in, we will reprint before 2026, and I'm sure Rita will, will have some input on that. That, that's pretty much about a three-year-old print right there, even though it says 23, 24.
I see Wise County, I see. We've got three, 21, 22, and 28. Breaks, of course.
You get some fabulous coverage on your social feeds from people that come in and do. I noticed High Knob Tower was number two on a very popular social media coordinator. And, you know, when, not only my kids, but I look at the numbers, I'm all about the numbers of people that view, you know, High Knob. Where else could you get a better view at Sun, not High Knob, Birch Knob? Where else could you get that view of Birch Knob? And I think regional, you know, I have a new agenda of what we call a three-day stay and play, where they come here and stay three days. We know they might go to Bristol and stay three days, but then they can't see it all, but they're going to come back. So that's part of my new marketing plan that I'll be sharing with Rita and other people as we press forward. And it's impossible to cover everything in that guide and keep it within our budget.
Mr. Chairman, I ask you, I was going to tell you, when we had the power outage, we had all of the people in here. I talked to several misses. I was on the road, you know, traveling, and then they worked at my house also. And they said it's the most beautiful region they ever saw, and they're bringing their families back. That was the one thing they said, they want to bring their families back and see this region.
And you know, that's the, the effect of tourism is not just visitors, but, you know, I mentioned my daughters. I want them to live here after they graduate college. I want the employees to stay, the employer to be satisfied. That quality of life piece, you know as well as I do, when we bring the legislators here, they love it. They love our region, they love our culture, they love our quality of life. So those are things, that quality of life piece, you know. So many times, I do high, I used to do high school programs that I would show a short presentation, and I would ask the kids a question afterwards. I said, do, how many of you had done any of these activities? And no hands would go up. And I said, do you realize everything you've seen was within an hour of where you see it? So so many times, our kids don't appreciate, and even our residents don't appreciate the rich culture we have, the history, the music, the festivals, and we have it all. We have a lot of fabulous things. So that's part of my agenda also.
You say this book here needs to be updated, right?
Yeah, somewhat. I'm in the process.
I don't see Ralph Stanley's festival on here either. How long you been working for the Heart of Appalachia?
April 1st.
Oh, so you've just not been there.
Does anyone have any question? Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got the Fourth Proclamation for the Black History Month. I'd like to read this for everyone. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans through our country. And whereas, beginning February the 12th, 1926, and for many years thereafter, a second week of February was celebrated as Black History Week, chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Adam Abraham Lincoln. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial Black History Week, was expanded to, became established as Black History Month, and now is celebrated all across America. And whereas the celebration of Black History Month is a positive way of recognizing the culture, the history of the African-Americans as essential to the core beliefs and values of our society. And whereas the contributions of the African-Americans have made vital, have been vital to the growth and development of Dickinson County and our nation. And therefore, the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim and observe February 2025 as Black History Month, as we recognize and observe the significant contributions of African-Americans to Dickinson County and our country.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this proclamation.
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second to approve, approve the proclamation of Black History Month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. New business? Got the agreements?
Mr. Chairman, if I might on that, we have, before you in your packets, you have four different agreements. These were last bid out to bid in 2021. Item 8A1 is for the bathrooms on Pound River. Two is the bathrooms on Cranes Nest Trail. Both of those are currently maintained. Bo Dotson, county employee, takes care of cleaning those. And the third one is the spillway ball field. Mr. Chris Woods, another county employee, does those under contract. Then we have our mowing contract, lastly, for all the mowing of the county properties. Sergeant Lawn Care is currently doing that. And of course, it's at the pleasure of the Board. If you'd like to rebid these, that's why we always put them on the January agenda to give us time to do those. Or the mowing has one additional extension on the contract. This would be the last time we could extend that for the same price. But I have spoken to Mr. Dotson, Mr. Woods, and Mr. Sergeant are interested in continuing these services at the same price as if the county so desires they do that, so.
Barton, will the new property that we are going to be acquiring through the 202 project is, do we have to add that to the mowing contract?
We, we have, and we made adjustments to the contracts as we've been along, and we actually added that last year to the contract. Sergeant's taking care of that property. As an end, he, you know, priced that lot for us, and they're taking care of the sand lake property right now.
What about any of these other houses that are being acquisition of those properties?
Then we'll have to look at what we did last year, as we took, because the cores hadn't removed the structures at the time. And we sent down maintenance, and I think they took some community work, program workers out, and we needed to clean that. But as they are coming back to the county, and it is properties, we will have to maintain, so.
So you would just add them to the sergeant contract and then?
We could on some of those, and, you know, some may be, you know, the county may agree to let a neighbor grow a garden on that property, and they take care of the property. Or, you know, the town, Hayside's interested in some of the lots downtown to expand parking and things. So, you know, each one will be different. It's whatever the pleasure of the Board is on how we handle those, so.
Do we want to take these individual or all together? Does anybody have an objection to them or have another suggestion?
Yeah, probably separately would probably be best.
Yes. Well, we'll start with the Pound River Agreement.
And that one's Chris Rat.
That one is Bo, actually.
Bo. Bo, I make a motion that we continue with that. We tried to bid these out once and we, it wasn't successful. So anyway, I'll make a motion that we renew the contract with Bo.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Like the Crane's Nest Trail?
I make a motion that we continue with Bo on the Crane's Nest Trail.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Spillway Ball Field?
That one's Chris.
Chris Woods.
I make a motion, we let Chris continue with spillway.
Second.
Ball field.
Motion in a second, let Chris continue with spillway ball field, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Which one?
Also, um.
Spillway is ball field.
Who seconded it? Peggy?
No, Chris Hall did.
I mean, um.
Chris Hall.
Chris Woods.
Chris Hall.
Chris Hall seconded.
And I make a motion that we continue the mowing with Sergeant Lawn Care for one more year.
I'll second that one, too.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. We'll move on to the appointments. Southwest Virginia Alcohol Safety Program. See if Mullins is currently.
Did you talk to Stephen if he would, uh?
I did, I sent an email out to him last week and he responded to me today. And he'd indicated in that that, um, you know, Chris suspected him last year on that. He'd been on it for three or four years and he's thinking maybe it's time to let someone else sit down, let someone else do it, so.
Do we have anyone else?
Well, I did have somebody, but they have a conflict with it. So I'm going to nominate Josh Newberry for that. I spoke with him earlier.
Well, I second it.
All right. We'll do a roll call vote on these appointments. Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Kaia?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
Aye as well. And next, the Standards Committee.
Again, I spoke with Mr. Powers and Ms. McAmis. Uh, they're both willing to, uh, serve another two-year term. Of course, I'm on there as well. Uh, Mr. Powers indicated to me, of course, that they've not met in a few years, but he said the state is looking at pulling something back together with them and starting some meetings up, so.
I make a motion that we reappoint those three that's on there to continue.
I'll second. All right. Motion in a second for the Standards Committee. Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaia?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I also. Said we had to remove this.
Yes, sir.
All right, next we got the, uh, lease, first with the Flemington Church Trustees.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, this is something that's done annually. This is the parking area, you know, Old Flemington School used to be across the road from the church. And that's leased to the church, you know, it's rated $1 a year.
I make a motion that we continue that lease with them.
I second it. Their parking lots, lady.
All right, we've got a motion in a second for the Flemington Church Trustees, lease. Mr. Hall, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Kaia?
Aye.
Ms. Willis?
Aye.
And Ms. Lewis?
Aye.
And I also. Next we have the Richmond Trip.
Mr. Chair, of course, this is on there. Uh, we will be traveling next week, leaving on Monday, the 27th of January, returning back to Dickinson County on Thursday, the 30th. Uh, currently, all five members have expressed interest in going. And according to our travel policy, the, uh, the board will have to vote to approve these. The updated forms are in your packet. Um, there's a travel, travel authorization form for each member. Uh, and this will include the cost of lodging and, uh, meals for this trip. Will be, uh, pretty busy schedule, we're meeting our legislators. Uh, of course, we talked to them when they're here, but the big thing is meeting a lot of the agencies. We're meeting a lot of funding agencies, we have a lot of requests, a lot of projects to talk about. So we're asking formal approval of that. And then, of course, at the conclusion of the meeting today, we will be, uh, recessing the meeting and calling back to order when we do arrive in Richmond and attend these meetings. So that item is on here kind of twofold, one approval of the trip and then one for the trip itself. Is that correct, Mr. Sturgill?
It is correct, yes.
So what we're asking for tonight is just approval of the, uh, travel authorization form for all five board members, so.
I'll make that motion.
No, Willie, this is all within the budget, you're saying within your budget, nobody's exceeding budget by any means, so.
I'll second it.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to approve the Richmond Trip. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Next, we have electronic meeting policy.
Will you share on that what you learned?
Yes, um, on this, this is basically the same policy that we currently have in place. Pursuant to the code of Virginia, we're required annually to approve the policy in order to be able to, to use it. And so my recommendation to, uh, our county administrator was to put this on the agenda for each January. That way we've got it in place just routinely. Um, but, but there's no changes in policy, but just to be compliant with code, it says that we're to approve the electronic meeting policy annually.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the electronic meeting policy?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor of approving the electronic meeting policy?
Aye.
Aye as well. Next, we have Clintwood Rescue Squad.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Melz is here with us today to share some information. But if he's coming up, I'll share, uh, less than updated packet for you at your seat. Uh, probably what, 30, 45 minutes before the meeting, uh, Mr. Melz received an updated vote on the ambulance. But basically, before he gets started, you know, Clintwood Rescue, uh, very blessed, they were notified on January 1st of this year that they were awarded 149,598.40 grant for a new Ford Transit all-wheel-drive ambulance with a Stryker Power Load Stretcher System. It's an 80% grant with a 20% match. And Mr. Melz is here today to, uh, address you on that and ask for, uh, commitment for the match on this ambulance in about 44,883.50, so.
As y'all well know, we had an ambulance to go down approximately three months ago or so with a motor and it's going to cost approximately $30,000 to replace that motor. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to be able to apply for this grant through, uh, the Virginia EMS Grant System and, uh, was awarded, uh, for a transit van and, and the load system. Uh, and it's 44,830, 83.50. Uh, I'd ask the board if they would match the grant.
Mr. Chair, if I might, uh, of course, during our budget, uh, season, our budget discussion, you know, we took on the repair of fire and rescue vehicles. Uh, this year, we budgeted a separate line item for that and, you know, it's kept us pretty busy. It's truck shop as well as outsourcing, you know, they outsource as much as they do. Uh, but a lot of expenses and stuff, uh, going into that. But, um, at the same time, when we done budget with some of our, uh, funding that we're receiving now through the LGIP that we did through Davenport, um, you know, we've got a portion of that in the budget. Uh, and of course, everything's coming in, you know, a little better than budget. And that's where I would propose that these funds come from. You know, we're looking at some equipment replacement for the fire and rescue out of those excess funds on that, so.
Oh, you're saying we have enough money in the budget not to go into the general fund or anything like that? And so I make a motion that we provide this match to the Clintwood. Rescue Squad?
I'll second that. We have a motion to provide the match for the new ambulance in the amount of 44,883.50. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That's cheap rest, pay for it.
It's very, thank, thank you for writing that grant and making sure to, to help us with that 80%. That makes a big difference to us.
Did you write that grant, Nathan?
Bottom line.
Ron actually wrote it this time. Uh, he, I was out of town when the grant came due, so he, he wrote it.
That's a good.
When I said thank you, I was referring to your squad, thank, thank everybody for their contributions. That really helps us on the bottom line when we get these grants. Next, we have the holiday calendar, this will need to approve the.
Yes, Mr. Chair, what we were trying to do on this is to be proactive, just like with our organization meeting, when we looked ahead at the calendar and looked at the meeting dates, they would have to be altered and this meeting being one of those. Again, we're looking back at what's happened the past couple of years. Uh, of course, we follow the Virginia State Holiday Calendar. And, uh, there's been some additional, uh, holidays granted by the, uh, Virginia Supreme Court, which the board graciously decided to match this past year. So we're asking for consideration of, um, of course, in addition to the state holiday calendar, Good Friday, which you all gave last year. Uh, Christmas Eve, we're giving a half day, we're asking for an additional half day for that. And then New Year's Eve on the 31st, or whatever the pleasure of the board might be, try to go ahead and set the calendar for the year instead of coming back each, each time there's a change.
I'll make a motion that we set it for the year and follow the guidelines that is set forth here.
I'll second it.
Change of motion in a second to follow the, uh, state holiday guidelines. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Next is the payroll calendar.
Mr. Chair, again, we're looking ahead. Each year, uh, in the past since I've been here, and I'm sure even before that, uh, we've always had to look at the November and December payrolls and bring that to you right before, uh, the time on that. And looking ahead at the calendar, again, the county always pays their employees on the 15th and 30th of each month. And, uh, we always try to make sure employees are paid before Thanksgiving. Uh, so we're proposing moving the November 30th payroll to Tuesday, November 25th. And then before Christmas, we always like to even get that 30th payroll before Christmas. And so we're proposing move that to Tuesday, December 23rd. And so that's what we're asking is approval to move those payroll dates. That way at the beginning of the year, we're kind of taking care of some of these housekeeping items, so.
Hear a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Next, we have another business, acceptance of the school property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, of course, this, um, property, uh, was given to the county on December 20th of 2024 from the Dickinson County School Board. And this is for the Sand Lake Elementary School property as well as at the former Hayes High School property. Of course, they'd already given us the land where the school was, but the land across the road, like where the wagon van and stuff was on the right-hand side of the road, that's encompassed in this deed. And, uh, this is part, as the school was closing out their project with the corps, this was their last item of business that had to be done. And I think Mr. Sturgill just got this deed back last week or?
I, I did. And, and we're just asking for formal acceptance from the board as far as for the property.
I'll make the motion that we accept the property in the Sand Lake and down across from the Hayes High School.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well. Next will be item IB, which was added to the agenda, Sandy Ridge Rescue.
This is borders, Mr. Ince, this is coming to the state here. I've sent an email on Friday sharing this information about the ambulance he's going to share with you today.
Thanks for adding me to the agenda, we appreciate that. So for a while, we've been asking for certain items. One ambulance, the other power cot. And, uh, we kind of found a, a vehicle that kind of wraps it all up in one big bunch. One, we need another four-wheel-drive ambulance. First Predator Fire Rescue's got an ambulance up for sale. They were asking for a little bit more money for the ambulance because it's four-wheel drive. It comes with a power load system, it comes with a stretcher that can hold an obese patient. We actually have quite a bit of obese patients within our area. This, uh, this ambulance would become more useful to us than what we currently have now. Yes, we could file for a grant for an ambulance by having ambulance salespeople at our station, looking at our station and what modern is out there to, uh, or what's current. Most of those ambulances aren't even going to fit our bay, so we'd have to ask you for a new station. We're not asking for that, we're asking for $35,000 to purchase an ambulance. Basically, we're purchasing a cot and a power load system, getting an ambulance for free. Going back to this last Saturday, we had a call, and I'm going to use this for an example. Our ambulance crew gets on scene, of course, it's snowing, there's ice out on the road. The caller tells dispatch the road's clear. The ambulance starts over the hill, hits ice, goes for about a half football field, nearly hitting a tree. They're stuck, they now have to treat a traumatic patient, keep the patient from hypothermia, and wait for assistance to get to them, wait for another ambulance from elsewhere, and wait for a tractor nicely, uh, brought by a Clintwood Fire member to help all crews get this patient free from this icy location as well as our ambulance. If we had another four-wheel-drive ambulance, that ambulance could have responded in a quick amount of time, chained up its wheels, went down, got the patient, and got the patient to the hospital without delaying further care. But we also look at both the rescue squads in the county having at least two four-wheel-drive ambulances. We have one. If our one four-wheel-drive ambulance goes down during the winter time, what are we to do? Shut down all rescued efforts up on Sandy Ridge Mountain until winter time is over? How about during heavy rainfall? So we go through a lot of areas where four-wheel drive's needed. But I think another advantage to this is the fact that it comes with the power cot. We keep asking for them, we already know how expensive they are. This one has the wings on it. Our current cot right now, we can, says it holds up to, what, I think 700 pounds, 750 pounds? We can't put a 450-pound patient on our stretcher because it's not set up for obese patients. This stretcher will be set up for that. And only will, they take the strain off of us for one, just being a power cop that has a power load system. Now, if you know the cost for a power load system, they're, they're expensive, they're ridiculous. Talk about less back injuries, less of my crew members having to call out because they got back strain. They pulled a muscle, they're having problems with their hips. We do have those problems and no, we don't claim them on insurance because they choose not to claim them on insurance. But we need another ambulance, we need another ambulance soon. Uh, they were asking 50,000 dollars for the ambulance with a little negotiation. They're down to 35,000 for this ambulance. And I'm going to ask you today, if you'd help us without saying no, because we need this and we need, we need something now.
Last question.
Yes.
What year model are you looking at?
It's a 2009 F-450. It fits perfectly.
2009?
Yep.
How many miles?
Uh, the motor, it's got a brand-new motor in it, it's got 50,000 miles on the brand-new motor.
How much has it got on it, all to get?
It'd be 170.
One what?
It'd be 170, if, if, if it had an old motor, it'd be 170. It's got a new motor in it with 50 in it. And it's been deleted since the new motor was put in. The last motor did not have a deletion, they had troubles from it, as we did with our Rescue 48 truck before we got it deleted.
Don't mind some older vehicle.
I don't mind older vehicles, I don't need all the bling. I just need something that works to get us to our patients and back. We don't care to file for grants and stuff, that's, that's not a real big problem, but we're asking for help now, we've been asking for help. Again, if I take a modern built ambulance today, we're not going to fit it in the bay, so could I have seventy-four thousand for a brand-new station? That's, that's a little bit out of the ballpark right now. And I understand that the budget with the county's a little bit tight, we get that. We're not trying to come here every month to ask you guys for something. We try not to bother you with that, we're here to know you guys are going through a struggle. We're coming to ask, we can wrap up a whole bunch of problems all in one purchase. Power cut, load system, four-wheel drive, and a truck that can handle obese patients. We got patients, we have a patient in our caller area that weighs over six hundred pounds. Can you imagine two crew members on a truck trying to lift that patient? Power load to lift it?
Did you all attempt the last?
Four hundred pounds.
Did you all attempt the last round of grants?
Uh, no, we didn't attempt, what, for the ambulances?
Yeah.
No, no, because we had the ambulance sales folks up there measuring our bays and stuff, they said, yeah, it'd probably be a good time for you to get a bigger bay. Probably be a good time to get a new station.
So they, they don't.
Transit vans sound nice, especially for like, like Clintwood's doing. That, that sounds great in our area, back when we first started running the rescue squad, we're like, man, vans sound like a great idea, you know, we got narrow roads, the whole nine yards, it's going to work out great, not to say the van hasn't worked out pretty good for us. We've nearly wrecked that van going over hillsides. Vans are not a good idea up in that, up in Sandy Ridge, neck of the woods, it's a really bad idea, we come to find out. And the mechanic currently down at the shop, not Travis, the other fellow that works for him, with Travis was standing there, looked at the van ambulance and even said, that's unsafe for you guys even being. I mean, seriously. It'd be nice to have another truck up there that we can depend on.
Well, it's unsafe, Ben.
I don't know. But, it's, it's too top-heavy for our area. And one, right now, it currently has a antifreeze leak, it's not dripping it, we took it up to the shop before to have fixed, they said it was fixed. We found that it wasn't fixed, we took it back, they said it was fixed. Since then, we've been pouring antifreeze in it literally weekly if we're not filling it up. We can't find it dripping anywhere, it's not going in the oil, nobody knows where it's going. It's usually not a good sign, right?
Do they not build ambulances by s- certain sizes? Are they not one that you could get built out there, a smaller designed one that would fit your bay?
And that, that, that's a possibility, like I said, I don't mind, I don't mind for, for the four-wheel drive that we're looking for, no, it'll never fit our bay.
Will this four-wheel drive fit your bay?
Absolutely, it's actually the same size as our rescue forty-eight truck. It's the same make and model, basically, just a different year.
I think everybody's concern is probably the year model and a hundred and seventy thousand miles.
It'd be the hundred and seven thousand or fifty thousand on the motor, so.
The chassis still got a hundred and seventy thousand on it.
I understand that, but if you look at most of your ambulance, Richard, we're looking at ambulances that can do over five hundred thousand miles.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Barton a question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Barton, did we have something in our policies that we take this into consideration for a month before we actually vote on it?
Actually, I think we do, any new funding requests, I forgot, in our board rules of procedure, I didn't think about that, I'll pull it verified.
That we have to wait a month before we can vote it out, till we can see if we have the thing, is that correct?
I think you're correct, I'm pulling that to make sure.
That's kind of scary because you know it'll be gone by then. Just like the last few times we've asked for an ambulance, each one gets sold.
Explore, uh, here they are.
I was thinking we had that in our policy, that we wouldn't vote it out at the meeting, they're asking, give us thirty days.
I'm looking here right now, I've got it pulled up. Request for funds outside of normal budget, stop calling.
Ain't my problem, is it with the age of it?
We've got the policy pulled up, Ms. Willis, I'm having trouble finding that section, I do remember something.
Not sure where it was at, but I think it would be in there.
I think there's something that would be.
I remember we had a discussion about it.
It's like this, it's like we're buying the equipment, the power cot and the power load system, and getting an ambulance free. Even if the ambulance went down, you can move that equipment over to another truck and still be a win-win, why keep making a lose-lose out of everything we're trying to ask for?
You are correct, it says in here, carryover request, if it's not possible to utilize, blah, 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 the request should be carried over to the next regular meeting following introduction to the board, so.
There for a reason.
I don't give a, uh.
Can we explore it, would it be possible to explore with an ambulance company? Like what would fit in your bay if we could get something, and, you know, Nathan, do you know when the grant cycle reopens on that again?
It should be. I think it closes March, March the third.
So it's open now, you think it closes March third?
It should open at the end of February, then close at the beginning of March.
I mean, they need something, I mean.
Chairman, I campaigned in a van up there, and I went on, every road up there, the first two years I had a van. And I campaigned on every road up there, and I had no issues with turning it around, sometimes I had to back out, but.
That's cool, I'd like to put you in the ambulance and send you up there.
Well, I mean.
I've been fighting for this rescue squad, fighting for this rescue squad.
But why can you all not use a, um.
Y'all could have it.
I mean, why could you all not use a van if Clintwood can use a van?
Okay, so that's different, that's two different terrains. I mean, you're welcome, come to Sandy Ridge, do some more for yourself. I mean, we're dealing with Sandy Ridge, we're dealing with Brushy Ridge, we're dealing with parts of Ailing, we're dealing with parts of Trammell area, we're dealing with parts Kaney and other locations. There's places that we cannot take that thing. It's, it's too terrifying, me and Mr. Frederick Dill, our first lieutenant, took a trip not long ago. I brought that to Larry's attention, I was terrified to death, I was pretty sure that we were going to roll that ambulance, not just us, but with that patient inside. We were on, we, we had people looking at us going, I don't think you guys can do it. And I honestly believe that we couldn't have done it. You know, I say prayer goes a long way because we were able to pull it off. But nor will I put myself in that position again.
Mr. Barton, do you think?
Vans are good for transfers.
I think it's a pleasure of the board, I mean, you just approved something for Clintwood for forty-three thousand, and it was brand-new, you know, the match part on it, so. It's really the pleasure of the board what you want to do, I think, you know, Will would have to address the policy that we.
As, as far as the policy that's in place, that wouldn't technically prevent an action, but I, to me, you would need to make an action to suspend that part of the policy to be able to then proceed with an action item from there. But, because as of right now, the way it reads, again, it's that the request is made and then thirty days later, or, or that the next regular meeting, that the action item would be taken back up. But, so it really depends ultimately on facts and circumstances that's presented. Because, yes, there's a policy in place, but if it's an emergency circumstance or a situation that in thirty days won't be present, I think that you all can take that into account.
He's asking for thirty-five, right?
Thirty-five thousand.
Is, is there any, what, may, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is there any way you could get Wise County to ship it?
Okay, so I'm glad you asked that question, now Wise County bought an ambulance for us before. They've also bought us a first response unit, all while you told us no loads times as well. We, we can't take, keep taking no. We need this vehicle, we need it now, it's not just a vehicle we need. We keep asking for a power cut, right, and a load system. We're getting both, the power cut and the load system, and getting the ambulance practically free. It's a win-win all the way around, I'm not worried about the year of the ambulance, I've been in ambulances as old as in the nineties, in the early two thousands, that run forever, it depends on how you take care of them. Take good care of your vehicles, they're going to run longer, you don't take care of them, they're going to be like a private ambulance service, they're going to break down every time you turn a corner.
Are you do, doing any calls for Russell County at all since they closed date?
They closed their fire department, they didn't close their rescue squad.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Well, yes, we, we, we haven't in a while been into the Russell County side to answer calls, but in the past, we have ran into Russell County side to answer calls. We've run in Russell County side, Scott County, Wise County, Dixon County. We, I mean, we're not going to turn you down if you say you need an ambulance. We want to be able to get to you.
Mr. Barton.
Yes, ma'am.
About the funding, can we do it?
The funding would be the same way as the funding for.
We use the, what we have earned on our CDs.
Our investments.
Correct.
And first, we would have to pull out the policy, am I right, Mr. Barton?
That, that is correct, because currently, we've got a policy that says that it would be considered at the next board meeting.
So we would need a motion to that effect.
Correct.
Well, I'll make a motion to that effect that we put that policy out, that we wait thirty days.
Can I ask Mr. Barton something? When you had the meeting, was rescue part of, with the fire and putting in order of vehicles?
We had two separate, uh, meetings, Mr. Zachary was with me on that, I don't remember if Mr. Hall was at that one. But, uh, yeah, we had two separate meetings on that, and, of course, all rescue agencies were present, Clintwood, Hayside, Sandy Ridge, and expressed their needs as far as what they had, but at the time, as far as priorities, we didn't really, uh, come out with a clear path on that, I don't think did we, Mr. Zachary, as far as, as we did with fire, uh.
Was this a request at that time?
Well, they've always had a request that they need a, an additional ambulance, a better ambulance, so.
This particular ambulance wasn't, I don't think was available at that time.
No, it wasn't available at that time, no. And, you know, I probably wouldn't be here now saying, hey, I need this ambulance, but you get a package deal, it's hard to pass up something that's so packaged, I mean, you got four-wheel drive, you got the power lift, you got the power cot that holds obese patients, something that we ain't got currently, when we get an obese patient, we have to turn them over to another ambulance service. I mean, we, we've got everything we need that we've been requesting all in one vehicle, one purchase of thirty-five thousand dollars. Not worried about the year, again, take good care of your vehicles, they run a while.
Mr. Chair, I will say for the record, of course, you know, with this, an O-nine ambulance, a hundred and seventy thousand miles, there are going to be more repairs and maintenance on the county side as it would if we were paying a match, you know, you know, no offense to you, but I prefer paying a match towards a new ambulance, something that's going to last them for many years, just spend a little bit more money than the thirty-five and get them in something newer than just spending thirty-five on an old ambulance, a hundred and seventy thousand miles, even though I know you need something right now, I understand the balance, I mean, I think the board's committed to doing something, it's totally up to the board, but, you know, with this ambulance, you are going to be taking on additional repairs and risks if the motor goes down or something happens, you know, with that, it isn't going to be like the one for Clintwood, it's going to be new with a warranty and, you know, you're paying eight thousand more for a new one than this one. But, again, we got the whole situation, can you get something that's going to fit in your bay, I understand that, you say a van won't work for you. And I'm not against you by no means, don't take it that way, I'm just kind of stating the obvious here as far as where we are from a financial standpoint, whenever we're trying to invest county funds into something that's going to last and something that's.
All of our equipment that we ever asked for has lasted. I'm not going to come to you and ask for your junk, I don't want junk, I want something that runs good. I'm familiar with the department that's selling it, I'm familiar with the truck itself, um, I've worked out of the truck.
Excuse me.
I thought it was a questionable item, I definitely want to come ask for it because I don't need questionable items at my station, I need working items at my station. So, I'm not here to waste your time, I'm here to ask for help and hope that you grant this request, take the trust, what I'm telling you is real. I'm trying to run a rescue squad, but I can't run it on those. And I hear that a lot here.
Mr. Chair, can I ask him a few questions?
Yes, go ahead.
The cot that you're talking about, what's the lifespan of those, warranties, batteries?
Batteries, it's, uh, so far, our batteries have held up pretty well, we've had our cot now for, what, about two years?
I think so, roughly speaking.
Yeah, the one that you're, that you'll be getting with this, if you get this, does it come with the batteries?
I believe, I believe, if I recall, the, um, the load system actually charges it. But there are batteries connected to it.
So it's all working, everything?
All works in order together. That's, to tell you how long cots last for, it just depends on how well they're taken care of, just like anything else.
So how old is this cot?
How old is this cot?
Yeah, the one that you're requesting?
I, I don't know the age on this cot.
I don't know the age of that?
I don't.
But it is functioning properly?
Oh, yeah, functions just fine.
And what's usually the cost of those cots?
Too much, um, you can get a brand-new one roughly twenty-five with the bariatric stuff added to it for about twenty-eight thousand. The load system itself, you could probably get one used at about thirty thousand, and you can buy them brand-new somewhere about fifty thousand plus.
Yeah.
Eighty-six, yeah, so, I mean, really, it's a win-win. You're buying the equipment and getting a free ambulance, I don't know how to stress that one.
Now, you have one ambulance up there that you said's dangerous, it's a box style.
To me, I feel it's dangerous, and a lot of my crew members won't even get in it because they don't feel comfortable in it. You go around curves or certain tilts in the hillside and stuff, it's a van, it's top-heavy, it carries a lot of equipment, it's, it's just not stable enough to, I don't feel comfortable, I feel like if we shipped that ambulance, not only are we looking at lawsuits, we're looking at injuries, we're looking at already a damaged ambulance. It's not something we feel comfortable in.
But that's a van style.
That is a van style.
Or a box that you have is good.
The box keeps a more stability fit, right.
The one that you have now, you've got a box right now, huh?
Yeah, yeah, we got a box.
But it, it's running fine?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so far, yeah, I don't want to jinx it because, you know.
How long have you had the van?
Huh?
How long y'all had that van?
Uh, about five years.
So you're looking to sell the van?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to get rid of the van.
How many miles it run in?
It's a hundred and, I think, twenty-eight or a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I'm not, I know it was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand last I looked at it.
And the box truck that you're looking at from, what's, uh, the engine?
It's got fifty thousand on the miles right now as far as the current motor, um, but there'd be a hundred and seventy roughly.
What motor does it have in it?
A six-four.
Six-four?
Yep.
Diesel. That's what in our email the other day.
How many miles did they get out of the original, you know?
Um, I guess it was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
So they just changed it one time?
Yeah. They started having problems out of their, yeah, out of their truck in the DEF system, was one big issue that they were having, they got that deleted. So that's no longer an issue for that truck.
Now, why are they selling that one, they got, did they get them?
They just bought like four brand-new ambulances, a really good.
So they did get some new ambulances and?
Right, so they contacted me and let me know that they had their ambulance sell, because I've been talking about, we need an ambulance, we need something that's similar to our either forty-eight truck or one of our other smaller trucks that we have that would fit in that bay. And unfortunately, you come to the station, the bay, it used to be a barn, okay? It used to be a barn, and when they started making a rescue squad, it fits two old-school van ambulances just fine inside it. Well, uh, two thousand and eleven, they got that rescue number forty-eight truck, and it fits in there, it fits in there perfect, so to speak. It's got about an inch from smacking the top of the bay doors itself as it would come in. And it fits enough length for crew members to walk in front of the bay and in front of the truck, so to speak, to get to and from the crew room. As other trucks that we've tried to park, Clintwood fifty-five, and there's a head end to be sticking outside the bay. As other trucks that we've tried to park, Clintwood 55 in there, head in and be sticking outside the bay. If we tried to park their 53 truck, I guess that's the one that's broke down right now, or your 51? 51, we'd never be able to get in, in our bay. It's just a little bit taller and the way that the driveway drops down and then comes up to the bay, we tear the back end of the, either the truck or we'd tear out our bay door. It's, if our driveway wasn't like it is and our sta, and our bays weren't built like they are, I mean, the bays, should I say, if the way to get inside the station itself, if it wasn't built like it is, we might fit a bigger truck in there.
So you're pretty much saying that you're restricted to used ambulances?
I'm not.
Because of the bay, the building?
No, I can, we can say, "Hey, listen, we could get a brand-new ambulance. We'd get a van-style with the box on it and it would fit in our bay." Absolutely. It would. It's not going to be four-wheel drive. I haven't seen any van-style four-wheel drives and, I don't know. It's been, been a very long time. Typically, yeah, that would fit in there, a new-style van box.
The van body.
A van body with the box on the back would...
But if you wanted to put a box in there, you're restricted to just using it?
I'm sorry?
If you just wanted to put a bo, if you wanted to put a box ambulance in there, you're restricted to used ones?
Again, if we use the van, the van cab box series, we can fit one in there.
Okay, the van cab, right, the box.
Right. So it's got a van cab on the front, back that would fit in there, yes. They're a much smaller ambulance.
Yeah.
Right. So we look for ambulances that are at least the height they can actually make it in the, actually into the bay and the length and the width. A lot of our newer model ambulances are out there, a little bit taller and a little bit wider and a little bit longer. A lot of that has to do with the cab itself, you know, with the trucks and, I don't know, the suspension. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know. I'm not a, I'm not a truck mechanic, engineer-type person. But, you know, we, we deal with the size of trucks, happen to know our heights and our, our width and stuff. And some stuff's making now, it just, it won't fit in our barn.
So that kind of restricts you on vehicle choice?
Yeah.
I guess that's what I'm getting at.
We got a lot of restrictions up there.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're working with what we got. And a lot of the stuff that we need to work with, we're working with on a limited basis. That's why we, we've been here numerous times and said, "Listen, we need a new station." If we had a new station, we'd have more options to be able to do stuff, a more wider area to work with. I know right now, getting a new station, asking for $70,000, $100,000 for a new station, that's probably not going to happen right now. I have a better chance of asking for $35,000 and getting, you know, a bunch of ducks knocked out with one rock, right? So we're working what we got. We ain't got much, but we're trying to make it succeed.
Why not ever apply for a grant?
We don't mind applying for a grant. We're going to be waiting two years, first of all, just to get the truck. Second of all, I mean, it, it just depends what they're able to make for us. Again, I don't care to file for the grant. That's not a problem. We need something now. Again, I'm, I'm looking at multiple things wrapped up in one. Instead of me coming to you saying, "Hey, I need this ambulance. I'm going to file it on a grant. I'm going to come back to you later. I'm going to tell you I need a paracot. And I'm going to come back to you later to tell you I need a power lift. And I'm going to come back to you later and tell you I need another four-wheel drive." And we just kill it all with one bird.
Well, according to Clintwood's, they got their paracot with it, isn't it?
They're saying 140, 240 days on their ambulance delivery, too.
Yeah, yeah. They're looking at up to 240 days, but it's still something he could apply for.
I don't mind applying.
That if, if it takes that long to get one, then they could be looking at replacing one of their other ones and apply, and have a grant. When you never apply for a grant, you have to settle for used because we don't have the funds for a brand-new.
Right. We can't buy a brand-new without a grant, so.
I, I would think applying for a grant and then go from there if you get it.
And I, I keep hearing, "Apply for a grant, apply for a grant." Again, we've had ambulance sales representatives up to our station. Just give us map-out drawings of ambulances. And every ambulance they come up with is not going to fit in our bay.
They can't make a smaller one?
I'm sure they can. You know, we've asked for the van type. The turnaround on a van type is two years or more. I mean, we can, I could say, "Okay, we'll wait two years." I'm not waiting two years. I'm not going to stay with the rescue squad that long and keep suffering. I'm not going to put my crew members through that. I got crew members that want to go to other stations because they got the equipment. That's not going to break their back. They got the vehicles that they get around in, that they're not going to have to sit there and scratch their head. They're going to break down on the side of the road.
Does your other unit have a power lift system in it?
It does not, but it does have a paracot in it. Now, that paracot we got from the ARPA fund, that paracot helps save a lot of back strain. It take, we use two people to load that ant, that stretcher into the ambulance and go. But once you put an obese patient on that stretcher, you've got to have some muscles to get them in there. You're looking at 200-pound stretcher and then an obese patient on top of it. I mean, you're looking at 400 pounds plus 200 pounds, 600 pounds. We've got some small people and we've got some big people on our squad. We can't pick and choose what day we're going to have an obese patient. I see a win here.
Mr. Chairman, I had a motion on the floor to remove the policy to set aside for tonight. I don't know if I got a second on this.
There was not.
There was not a second, yeah.
My motion died without a second.
I think most of the, and the motion did die without a second. But I think most of the board member's concern is for $8,000, you can get a new unit with the power load system, a all-wheel drive and not, and what we've been working toward, as Mr. Barton said earlier, is trying to get away from all these repairs and worn-out vehicles. And we're trying to move forward with newer vehicles. And we want to move forward with newer vehicles for everybody. I think that's a concern of the board.
And I hear that. I do. I hear that.
Zachar of, that's Mr. Melon's. He's just worked with an ambulance company. What's your, when you worked with him on this one, what did you...
We're pushing at about 12 foot if we're looking. That's not taking off. That depends on what part you're spending on the, on the barn.
It's 48 today. It's 24.
I can speak with the EV and see what they say. They've got EVO units as well. They've got 20 revs. I'm not sure what box would cause, but I can see if they can, can meet those needs.
I think it's worth exploring anyway and then, you know. I'd like to see you on something good, Jeremy, something that's going to last you, something that's...
And I get that.
And we'll work with you on a grant.
I get that, but again, if they can't, we just lost out on another great deal out the door. And I can count them all by my fingers. I'm telling you, I'm fed up. I'm done. I'm, I'm tired of fighting for something that's becoming a losing streak. We're not getting the help that we need. It is what it is. We're buying equipment and getting an ambulance for free. Wish y'all would come join a rescue squad.
I've been on rescue squad for years.
Right.
I was on fire department 25 years, fire chief for five years. I know exactly what you're talking about, but I also know the bad part about buying used equipment that somebody's getting rid of for a reason.
Yeah, they bought new trucks.
They, they're getting a new truck. I would rather see you in a new truck as a used truck with 170,000 miles on the chassis.
And I get that. I get that.
What's the pleasure of the board as far as a commitment to a match? If he could get a grant, are y'all willing to support that?
I'm all for a match for a new vehicle, myself.
If it, if it fits within the funding that we have set aside through the...
And I think we can. I think we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Think we can cover that, so. The box style would be more expensive than what Clintwood got, but again, you'd be putting them in a new ambulance if he could get the, get awarded a grant, so.
And what's the turnaround rate on that?
The company that I do has got boxers installed.
What's their turnaround?
Uh, the ambulance, 150 to 180 days, I think.
From the one he's getting?
And for the boxes, I would say probably no more than six months.
I know those, you think one of theirs is before-wheel drive that fit in our bay?
I think so. I'll speak with the salesman tomorrow or the next day. I can still call and speak with you. And I can get him to Jeremy's station and, and... But one recommendation that I, that I do say is that when you're getting a new ambulance, don't, don't get it easy. That's not what their problem is. They run just as good.
There are conflicting stories on that, so.
I mean, about $20,000, at least $20,000.
And diesel is bad in this kind of weather we're having now to run.
If, if you don't have a treated, if you don't buy treated fuel or treat it yourself, it is...
Yeah, yeah.
We take care of our trucks. We just, we keep them jail-free.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeremy, I know, I know since I've been on the board that that rescue squad got one brand-new vehicle. Since I've been on the board. Is it still running?
Yes, it's our 2011. It's the only four-wheel-drive truck we have. And it's the truck that's most used.
I know it was a nice vehicle because I, we saw it. Played right to the back of the courthouse when I was first on the board.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if you still had it or not.
I'm exhausted. I'm, I'm tired of asking for help. I'm exhausted. I'm going to wrap this up. You guys got anything else for me? I'm going to go do my thing.
If I could have got that pulled out, I would have made a motion that you could purchase it, but...
I get that, but, you know, the rescue squad and the EMS in this county is going downhill and we're trying to bring it back up and everything keeps going down as a roller coaster. I'm sick of the fight. I really am. I apologize. I'm not trying to come off rude or nothing. I'm tired of the fight here. We've been trying to do a lot of squads, get with the Navy, Department of Fire, whatnot, while we're standing in order. We don't say no. I'm speaking because I'm exhausted, tired of my crews. Our board is tired of hearing the word no. I'm not a great spokesperson. I want to be. I'm trying to fight for our rescue squad to get things that we need. Yes, it's a used truck. I can see past a used truck. I like the equipment that's in it, for one. But I also like that it's four-wheel drive. I also know it's available. I also know it fits my bay. I'm also comfortable with it. I'm comfortable. Again, if it was a piece of junk, I want to come to you and ask you for help. I'm coming, asking for help again and again. No different than the last four years. We're back to no. How many no's can you take before you want to give up?
All right, that's the last thing on their agenda. Well, we'll recess till the Richmond trip?
I make a motion that we recess our meeting until we meet in Richmond. Do we have to, we have to adjourn after we come back, right?
Yes, before we leave to come back, then we'll actually adjourn the meeting at that time, so.
So I'll make a motion that we recess before our Richmond trip.
I'll say, all in favor of the recess?
I as well. We're in recess up till Richmond.